Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Councilmember Kelly is absent. Approved of the agenda, we've under unfinished business, we have a report on the north construction project that will be in addition to that. Is there any other changes to the agenda, council? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Motion to approve with the change.
Motion with Dave.
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes, June 5th, 2019, regular meeting, receive them in your packet. Is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2019, regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. This brings us now to our public open forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call it third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed. We have no public hearings, then bring us to reports and presentations. Police Department Monthly Report, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, activity report for May 2019, some of the numbers we had for the month, we had 14 alarm calls, we had eight animal complaints, a few of them were raccoons and one bear, we had 97 assists for businesses, 29 assists for other agencies, 14 patrol bar crowd areas, 33 citizen contacts, we had eight harassment calls, we had 16 liquor license renewals, background for those, and then we had 28 matter of information calls, 27 medicals, nine open doors at businesses that we found, we did 41 school patrols, we had 77 patrols at Walmart, we had four thefts, and we had eight welfare checks, and we had four verbal disputes, and we gave out 221 verbal warnings, for a total activity of, well, total calls of 628, and we gave 221 warnings, so we had a total activity of 849. So compare that to 2018, we're up by one call, and down on warnings by 127, so down by 162. Compared to last month of April, we're up 179 calls, and down 56 warnings, so that's about it for the month.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Report, Vicki.
So I'm going to be giving the Public Works Report on behalf of Ben Flink tonight, just giving you a little bit of update of the Public Works Department. In the Street Department, they have completed their spring pothole filling, they have put down 33 tons of asphalt, so most of that is hand shoveled on there, so they did a lot of work there. The flash and crosswalk signs have been ordered, the tentative delivery is early July, we'd like to have them in before Sinclair Lewis days if that's at all possible. And also the crosswalk painting, now that MinDOT has finished their overlay, they'll be starting the painting next week for the regular crosswalks. We have a couple items to talk about on 10th Street and 8th Street, and there's an action item on that, so I'll delay that until that point. They are doing storm sewer inlets and outlets, so they've been cleaning those, and we had some additional parking signs and no motor vehicle signs on trails, just kind of those ones that you had ordered earlier, and now they are getting put up. In the Parks Department, the splash pad, they did close that for a day so that they could seal all the concrete on there, and they'll be cleaning and sealing the floor inside the shelter as well. And now they're doing the weed spraying around town, if you'll see them out doing that, and they're doing some tree removal. The EAB treatment starts tomorrow, so if you see them in the park, like Sinclair Lewis Park and campground, they'll be actually doing the application of the treatment, so if you're interested in that, plus we'll take some pictures, you can see what that's going to look like. At the airport, they did install a new door on the building for the courtesy car, if any of you have seen that courtesy car building, it did need a new door very badly, and then they also had some damage to the storm pond from plowing last winter, so they got that all repaired. Lightning took out the circuit board and the fuel pump, and that has been replaced and is now working again, and our hangars are at full capacity. We've always had a little bit of vacancy out there, but now we've rented the final hanger out there, so. If you have any other questions for Public Works, I might be able to answer them, and if I can't, I will find out the answer for you.
Questions?
I just got one. Since they did the mill and overlay on 71, is there anything that the Street Department can do without putting another ring on that one manhole cover to bring that up, because that thing's like a three inch drop from the top of it.
Which one?
It's just before the Lake Street.
Going north.
Going north.
I know we had issues for that, with that before, like even before they did it, and something about, I don't know that they can add any more to it, but I know we had issues with that particular manhole, but I will find out for sure.
My concern is if somebody's riding a motorcycle and they hit that thing, it could be a lot worse than just a car hitting it in an alignment job.
And I'll check with the PUC on that.
Okay.
Because that would be something that they would need to be involved in, if we can put another ring on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Planning Commission Report, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, in your packet you have a copy of the Planning Commission meeting that we had on June 12th, and at that meeting we did hold a public hearing for a variance, and that is on page 19, and included in that is the description and summary of, we received the application on May 10th from Tarr Ingel for a variance from the city code, which approved would allow for the construction of an addition to an existing detached accessory structure on his property. Typically, the code says on parcels occupied by dwelling, no attached or, no attached garage or accessory structure shall exceed 1,200 square feet, and the variance was for a total of 1,462, so a couple hundred square feet over that. So in your packet was included, usually there's survey requirements, but this lot, the owner was able to find the property pins for me, so I was out there taking pictures, and I included information that's usually on a survey. And typically, the variance should only be permitted when they're in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and when the variances are consistent with the comprehensive plan. The variance may be granted when the applicant for the variance establishes that there are practical difficulties to comply with the zoning ordinance. So and then you have a copy of his application, is on page 23 through 26, and page 27 is just showing that there are no utility easements in, behind his property to the rear lot line, and that is where this addition is going to go on his property. All of the utilities are in the front on Sinclair Lewis Avenue. And on page 28, you can see where they located the southwest corner pin, and then the southwest corner of the garage, which it is, he has plenty of clearance from his south lot line and the west lot line. The notice of public hearing was published in the newspaper and mailed out to the neighbors within 350 feet of the property, and as of that meeting, I had no questions, comments, or concerns about this variance from any of the neighbors in that area. And in the action item, the Planning Commission, they were to support the decision to be recommended to the City Council with any conditions on approval, and to have any explanation or details So the action requested of the Planning Commission and to forward to the City Council was to approve or deny the request to allow 780 square foot addition to an existing detached accessory structure that is 572 square feet with the following findings. The addition to the existing detached structure as proposed would not be injurious to the neighborhood due to the property's location as an interior lot and the addition's location behind the existing detached accessory structure, and only eight feet of that addition would be visible from Sinclair Lewis Avenue. The addition would be consistent with the neighborhood as other residential lots have detached accessory structures. The addition will not create any additional strain on public utilities that currently serve the property, because this will primarily be used for storage, so there don't be electricity going to this addition of that building. The property will provide inside storage, which will decrease the amount of outside storage on the property. The variance granted, if the variance is granted, he has one year to comply with that variance or it expires, and no application for the same or essentially the same variance shall be made within six months of the date if this variance is denied. And so you have also a copy of the proposed resolution, which is on page 31 and 32. So the Planning Commission was seeking approval for this variance based on those findings that I listed.
Planning Commission approved it unanimous, so.
If you have any questions, the applicant is here.
Any questions of Sarah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to action items. What?
Because that is my action item, the next one.
That is your action item.
Okay.
I did it.
Yeah, you just kind of, you just kind of did the whole thing.
The action item, 7A, approve resolution 2019-37 granting the variance.
Does everyone understand the situation, or have any questions? Sarah went over pretty much everything the Planning Commission did. Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2019-37 granting the variance to Tarr Ingel?
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against.
Thank you.
7B, repair of 10th Street South.
Okay, this is the 10th Street South, which is from Beltline Road to Center Street, next to the arena parking lot, so if you had a chance to go up there and take a look at that, you can see that it's deteriorated over the years, and it's due to groundwater seeping up, up through the pavement, and it's just lost all of its integrity. It's now in a condition we can no longer repair it via pothole patching, and so it was recommended that the city mill off the pavement for about a 100-foot length, and then revert to a milling or gravel base until a future time when we can do the project. So Ben got some estimates for it, I had about 100 feet, but I was wrong. His proposal is to mill 250 feet of the worst section of the road and leave the millings in place, and that the work would take place at the same time as the 4th Street project, which is on the north end, and it would be curb line to curb line, so we would have a 250-foot section which would be milling, or like a gravel base, and the total cost of that is the estimate we got from Central Specialties, if they do it at the same time, was $2,292.50. So and then that would buy us some time until we get in there, and there's some different proposals that are floating around on how that can be fixed, but to just put tar on top of it again next spring, it'll be gone. So this is kind of a temporary fix until we can get in there and do the proper excavation and tiling that would need to be done, and all of that could potentially be done at the same time as the arena, because the water comes from that direction as well. If you've looked at the arena parking lot, it's also done the same thing, in which we've been working with that for several years, trying to keep it together. So what we wanted to put it on the agenda is to talk to the City Council, you know, we're essentially taking this back to a gravel base, and that's not something we wanted to make a determination on, on a staff level, we wanted the council's involvement in that, if you felt that was the right way to go. So this would be a $2,292.50, we'd wrap it right into our other project. In addition to that, we have 8th Street that's by just north of the viaduct here, if you take, if you're going to go toward the school, and that actually has been reverted to some gravel, and so there's also a proposal to do a one and a half inch overlay with a tack coat on that for about 70 feet of length, just to kind of patch that in order to keep it in that condition until the Highway 71 project goes in, at which time that would be wrapped into that project. So essentially, I have kind of two little miniature projects here that I have in front of you. One is the 10th Street, to do that 250 feet and go back to kind of a milling base, and the other is to take 8th Street just to the west of Highway 71 and do a tack coat on that with an inch and a half of overlay, and that's only about 70 feet length there that they would want to do that, and that's about $3,300, and that would get us by until the 71 project, which is in five years from now. So what I'm asking you tonight is just to approve us go forward with these two projects. Central Specialties will do them at the same time that they're here doing 4th Street, Birch Street, and the Splash Pad parking lot, which could happen the end of June or the first part of July, just not the 4th of July or Sinclair Lewis days, so.
Questions? Looking at the 10th Street with Ben, and what they're with the mill, if you leave the millings behind and with some dust control on it, it'll basically firm up fairly good, but at least, you know, it'll be a little looser than just normal tar, but it will definitely take care of that problem temporarily, and because drainage tile is going to have to be put in that parking lot of the hockey arena, and then underneath that road to catch that water from pushing the tar up. It's the only way it's going to ever get fixed, the proper way, so.
When was it originally tarred? I thought it used to be gravel.
It did use to be gravel, it's not that old of a road.
No, it's not, it was, it wasn't that many years ago that it got tarred up.
Yeah, so, and the 8th Street to me only makes sense, you know.
Again, we're just kind of patching things to get through for a little bit.
We're doing Band-Aid fixes as much as we can until somewhere along the line we end up with a whole lot of it.
Well.
And I don't know if there'll be enough.
Highway will get done, and it'll be in the area, yep.
So.
Well, we know that that section of 8th Street's going to get tore up when we do Highway 71, because that's where the stormwater goes.
Yep.
Right.
So if you follow 8th Street from Ash, cross 71, zigzag up under the viaduct, and go all the way up to the arena though, it's, the entire way 8th Street is just a mess. Do we have a plan to mill an overlay in the next few years, that entire section, or?
We've been actually going road to road and kind of re-categorizing them. What happened with 8th Street going up toward the arena was after the street was in, then that development happened, and they cut into the street multiple times to put in services, so wherever those services are, there's big dips in the road. And so we're aware of that, and we also know that 8th Street going toward the school from Highway 71, that that's going to have to be a bigger project, it might involve sidewalks, it might involve a lot more than just fixing the road itself, and that's actually one of the items that's on the Safe Routes to School Planning Committee agenda, is to look at that road, because there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic that goes through there. So kind of, a lot of, a lot of things are going to come into play with 8th Street, we're aware of that.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the milling off of the pavement on 10th Street and put a overlay on 8th Street?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7C, approve resolution 2019-38 authorizing sale of excess materials.
This is the request to sell the ash tree lumber that we created when we cut the ash trees down this spring, and the goal is to take that lumber and recoup some of the costs that we had in order to make that project happen. At the time, we had the sawmill, portable sawmill came in, it deparked bigger trees, we got rid of the bark, and then we've had the lumber stacked on pallets inside of our salt shed, so it's been drying in there, and now our proposal is to sell it through the online bidding process, but we would advertise it locally that people could go in and bid it. So what we're looking for today is just to approve the resolution 2019-39 authorizing the sale of the ash lumber by competitive bid.
Questions? Do we know how many feet we got?
He was going to estimate that out, I think it's sitting on seven pallets, so I can't tell you how much lumber that is, he was going to estimate out how many board feet it was for the add.
Okay, I was just going to ask how, what lengths they were, whatever, but.
Some of that, we, when we first started out, there was some of them that were only four feet, but then when we realized we were going to do this, we cut them into eight-foot lengths, so, most of them are eight foot.
One other, I was just wondering whether or not by, by competitive bid, if we'd be better off for getting ahold of some pallet companies that might use it for pallets, rather than do a competitive bid thing. Obviously, they can bid on it, but I don't have an idea what green, green rough sod ash would be, for what, whether or not we'd be better off going that direction.
I guess not, knowing the dimensions or anything, it's hard to guess if it was worth it.
Right, yeah.
I guess.
Well, and we have some restrictions on outright sale, we can outright sell things to other governmental units, but we can't outright sell to somebody else without a competitive bid process, so.
So if they're interested, they'd have to bid on it, okay, makes sense. Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2019-39 authorizing the sale of ash lumber by competitive bid?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7D, accept resignation of EMT.
Tim DuVal has submitted his resignation from the ambulance department effective June 16th, he has accepted a full-time position with another service, so we're going to ask to accept the resignation of Tim DuVal from the ambulance department. He did an exit interview, and he gave very glowing remarks to the ambulance service itself, and usually it's in an exit interview where you find out those details that maybe aren't working real well, but he had nothing but good things to say, so I think he truly was moving on to a full-time position.
Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Timothy DuVal from the ambulance department?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7E, approve appointment of firefighters.
So previously, the City Council allowed us to advertise for the position of, for persons interested in serving on the fire department. A committee of the department interviewed interested candidates, they have the following recommendation for appointment, they're recommending the appointment of Peter L. Norgren, Jose M. Diaz, and Bryant J. Ostendorf to the department. They also are recommending that three additional people be placed on a waiting list for potential future appointment, that is Nicholas Wheeler, Neil Rhodey, and Dan J. Borgman. So what we're looking for tonight is to approve the appointments of the firefighters pending successful background and training requirements.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the appointments of firefighters pending successful background and training requirements?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Heidi. Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries four in favor, none against. 7F, approve installation of lighting at JC Park Ball Field.
So the Saks Center Youth Baseball Association has been working toward replacing the lighting at the JC Park baseball fields, this has been in front of you at other years for various, at various proposals. What's now the solution proposed, and they're requesting approval of the city to proceed, is the public utility would do the electrical updates prior to the transformer, Beam Electric is, will donate the electrical labor after the transformer, and Beam would also donate the lights, the baseball association the sockets, and CES a lift, and that's my understanding. So I'm getting, I do have representative here from the baseball association, if you have any questions, and we, the baseball association would be, would be coordinating this, there is no request for funding at this time, just permission to proceed.
Do I have a motion to approve the updates to the baseball field lights at JC Park?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. That takes us to unfinished business, North Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. On the North Project, moving along well, on Elm Street we have the utilities and curb and gutter completed, and they're working on a sidewalk. On Oak Street, they have the main utilities completed, and they're working on services. They also have the hospital corner, main utility is completed as well, including storm sewer, so they're going to be done on that corner until later in July when they complete the street improvements and the aprons entrances, so. Next will be the alley main, and they'll jump in there either tomorrow or Friday, start in the alley on the Sanitarium and Water Main. There's two, two services in the alley where we have a couple extra items that the PUC is picking up, one is a AC unit, has to be relocated, disconnected, and moved, and reinstalled, and the other one is a chain link fence, so the PUC is helping us with those costs, but they're being coordinated with the residents and the PUC. That's about it on the North Project, on the, related to the Getty Street project, the fistness pond across the street, we're going to be in there tomorrow, kind of recreating the bottom of the pond as directed by some city staff, so you'll see that going on tomorrow, hopefully before the rain starts.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you.
We have no new business, brings us to our consent agenda, we have a schedule of claims of unpaid claims of $183,125 for the same total, made checks, paid claims of payroll of $297,793.47. We request from James Medcalf representing the American Legion Post 67, an application and permit for a four-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the Stearns County Fair from August 1st through 4th, 2019, the fee and certificate of insurance are being provided, last meeting approval was for 3-2 beer, but has since changed their minds for strong beer. Request from James Medcalf representing the American Legion Post 67, has submitted an application and permit for a one-day temporary on-sale liquor license during the BAM, which is the bike across Minnesota, I think that is, in the Sinclair Lewis Park on August 15th, 2019, the fee and certificate of insurance. The fee and certificate of insurance are being provided. Is there any questions on the consent calendar? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against. And informational items, just a reminder, there's no council meeting on July 3rd, 2019. Any questions on that? If not, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Heidi.
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four in favor, none against, meeting adjourned.